Let's try this again. It is now six P M on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The city council meeting of Bel Air Beach will now come to order. Please join me and rise for the pledge of allegiance. Eddie, will you please call the roll?
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you, Patty. Item one is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker.
On second.
Second by Leslie Notaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Now we move to citizen comments. You'll have three minutes to address the council about anything that is not on the agenda. However, please do not expect an immediate response. When called upon, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Would anyone like to speak? Since we have no takers, we'll move on to item three. This is a presentation, award of finance, financial reporting achievement from, this is a mouthful, just hang, bear with me here. Award of financial reporting achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to the Finance Department of the City of Bel Air Beach for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The award will be accepted by Heather. Watan, Watanoya, Watanoya?
Watanoli.
Watanoli, is she here?
Yes.
Okay, great. If you will meet me at the podium to accept the award, I'll be right down. Okay, so everyone understands what this award is. I'm just gonna read it verbatim. "The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management." This certificate was awarded to Bel Air Beach, the Finance Department. However, we don't have one. Instead, I would like to present this to you. Next up, the presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Captain Lyman, are you prepared to give the law enforcement monthly report?
Wow. Interesting. Okay, everybody hear me? Mr. Mayor, everybody, it's good to be back. See some faces I'm familiar with and some newer ones. Some people have just moved around, but it is always a pleasure to be here. I just wanted to take the time on the report, just kind of remind everybody that since your meeting is at the beginning of the month, we're always like a month behind. So typically, we'll be talking about March, but in your all's case, we talk about February. So I'll go through that relatively quickly, and then I identify one thing from March to bring to your attention. And then if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer any of those. So on the monthly report that you have, you had two larcenies in February. Other two, one was a trailer that was stolen up by fifteenth. There was a construction area, an excavator, excuse me. They stole the trailer up there. The other one, someone was doing yard work. A company was in here doing yard work at a house, and they left their chainsaw in the yard, and that walked off. So both of them, with the trailer, I just read that report today. They've got a lot of good leads on it, so they're still working it. Both are being worked by detectives because the, obviously, the trailer was a vehicle, it's a, it'd be a grand theft. And then the chainsaw was felony amount, so they're both being worked from detectives. So hopefully, we'll have a solution to that down the road. But those are your big capers for the city. I did look into your traffic. You had a felony traffic, and that was self-initiated. That's where the deputy was actually running laser radar. And then didn't stop for radar laser, but saw they had a tag, their lights, the rear lights were out. Stopped them on at the person's been revoked for how many times? So that was an arrest there. The other one unfortunately was a D O I, driving under the influence. That was another one where they were patrolling. Somebody wasn't maintaining the lane several times. They cited how they kept clipping into the bike lane. So they stopped that person. That person was intoxicated, so at least they were able to remove them from the roadway before they caused some serious harm. I looked through your activities. It's the same pretty much with the activity monthly. I mean, a lot of its traffic stops direct to patrol, but it's geared towards what you're all, the citizens, bring forward. You bring forward to us or to Lynn. They'll go with me, and we'll direct our patrols appropriately. And then you don't have a huge, on your last page, crash. There was three crashes, so there's no real way to, other than two run Thursday. There's no discernible pattern there. That's kind of the February, the old data. The one I found recently, you probably already know about, was the crash out at Eighteenth and Gulf. Yet another person unfortunately was impaired. They were driving, said they looked down or whatever, but the nuts and bolts of it was the lady was impaired. Veered off, hit one of the, hit one of the palm trees in the median there. Got out, walked off. A resident had seen the person walk off, gave us a direction. K nine got here, K nine tracked, tracked the, tracked the person down to Bay Shore. Nineteenth and Bay Shore. Nineteen oh seven Bay Shore, we actually found her hiding in the bushes. So they gave us the direction that K nine got, but I finally was able to get the report clear, so I can send it to the cities to see if the insurance will obviously take care of that tree. But thankfully, this isn't, there's not as much going on in this city as some other cities and stuff. And I think it's good, obviously, that you don't have a crime, crime spree or anything out here. But that's kind of the gist of that more reason I'm really here is if you have anything and everybody being all installed and stuff, if I could help with anything or if anybody's got questions for me.
So. Thank you. Counsel?
That chainsaw caper, that was an active, the guys were currently active working on a home, and they put the chainsaw down, you're saying?
And? It was a company that was doing some type of yard work. So what in the report said, so they were doing yard work and left it in a yard. I don't know if they were out back or whatever, but it supposedly walked off. They had some lead, it's still active. So he took us to one place, we didn't get where we needed to go at that place, but there's some other stuff that are working.
What sec, what section of town was it?
That was, that's me, because I was, I was in order at one point. Two, two, five, one, five, seven, three. I thought it was up near where the, where the trailer was stolen.
That's what I would think.
It's like, oh, I'm sorry, I have two different packets here to try and make myself look organized. It was stolen. It was actually late reported up by one fifteen Sixth Street.
One fifteen, okay.
One, one, five, Sixth Street.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Citizens? Back to counsel? Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. Good to see everybody.
Up next is code enforcement. How are you doing?
Good evening, everyone. Steve Clapke for the record, and I want to congratulate everybody in the new positions. And, and again, I've got a special guest that I'm going to be introducing to you here in just a few seconds. As far as code enforcement, we still continuing to go after some of these contractors that are not licensed and doing work. They, with permits, we got another one today. And as far as some of the other violations, they pretty much slowed down as far as some of the nuisance violations that have been going on. I have been working with Commissioner Glenn, or Commissioner Gunn on the status sheets that we do every month, and we've kind of revamped that a little bit. So starting this month in April, it'll show all the events that, again, take place, but it's gonna have, just, it's gonna be broken down a little bit more. I believe we had close to sixty percent of the stuff that I did was on building permits and catching those contractors. And with that being said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Larry Thomas. You've heard me speak of him in the past. This is a gentleman that works for the Licensing Board in Pinellas County. This is a man that I call when I have an issue, and he's always quick to respond. And without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Thomas to you.
Thank you, thank you. Again, as he said, Investigator Larry Thomas, Mr. Mayor, I'm here. We kind of work hand in hand. Like you said, he reports them to the Licensing Board and me directly, and I do the research. The main thing, like you've mentioned, is permitting. There's a lot, lack of permitting, and we're not just finding unlicensed contractors with permits. I think the first call that we were on, we had a, he found a twenty-year construction license contractor that didn't pull a permit. And this, this structure was a three-story structure with a balcony, and they went in there and did some demo work. And it was a good catch because we, you know, we're protecting the public with that. So that's kind of our whole mainstay. Our role is, and the community is, education and compliance, simple as that. If we have to cite, we'll cite. Our citations, they start at five hundred dollars a pop, and, you know, we just, we just, we, our governor under forty-nine, state statute forty-nine, and, and the county ordinances. So again, I don't know if you've heard, I mean, obviously, you might be getting some calls, and we don't mean to disrupt anything here, but we just want to make sure that people know that we're out and about, and we're out there for the public. That's, we operate, the Licensing Board operates under the Special Act, and is one of seven special acts of a county in, in the state of Florida. And what that means is that we govern all, over all municipalities. So there are only three investigators in the county. I'm one of three. I have the mid-county, I work from the Gulf all the way to the, to the bay. So, and then we have one North County, one South County. So there's a lot of unlicensed contracting and unpermitted work going on. And we can't catch them all with Deputy Clapke, you know, like I said, he's the eyes and ears out here. And that's probably one of the reasons that we haven't seen us lately, unless we roll upon it and we're out patrolling. We just don't catch everybody. Anyway, thank you for your time. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Counsel, over here.
I'd like to thank you for what you're doing, and obviously, people are beginning to figure it out that maybe this isn't the place to be doing that, so this is.
Yes, sir. And the whole idea is, again, protecting the citizens of the city, you know, to make sure everything is done properly, so we don't have any issues. So stand for any questions?
Counsel, second. How about the citizens? Anyone have a question? Okay, back to counsel one more time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next up, we have the quarterly board reports. Currently, we only have a report from Parks and Rec unless one of the other boards has decided that they are presenting. Nope, I don't see any takers, so let's hear it from Parks and Rec.
Everyone, it's great to see you. Okay, so I haven't done quarterly board report in a couple of months. I missed the last one, so I apologize about that. I had a family emergency, so backtracking a little bit, but I'll be quick. So the community events that we had in the past six months include Halloween, Christmas. I'd like to thank everyone that attended. I thought they went well. It seemed like everybody had a great time, and we were pretty much on point with our plan. We plan to repeat a version of the Halloween and Christmas with your approval. Couple of things that we would do differently, or if anybody has any suggestions, we'd love to hear them, but possibly we'd like to incorporate a charity with the Christmas event, which we didn't do last year, just because we didn't think about it, whether it be bringing unwrap gift or something like that. And then Halloween, it's great that this room is being booked again with so many weddings and whatnot, but there are no Saturdays open in October. There's weddings every day. So we're looking at possibly a Halloween event on a Sunday afternoon, like late, but you'll get more information on that next month. But again, just recapping from last year, they went well, and we were happy with how they went and all the participation and all the volunteers and all the participants. We have sold Park and Rec over two hundred Beller Beach T-shirts, tank tops, beach towels, koozies, hats, and license plates. And I know people suggest other things like, not actually a Yeti, but like the insulated coolers, or maybe like little tote bags. So all of that goes through Kyle and Lynn. So like, suggestions are always welcome, because like, if people want it, we'll have it made. So again, just call or email, that'd be great. Another event that we had that wasn't so much, it kind of fell into the health and wellness category, was the Health and Wellness Fair in January. We had over twenty-three health and wellness care providers from daycare to chiropractic care, dentist, and we had about eighty residents that attended that. So thank you, I think everybody got a lot out of it that attended. We're hoping to repeat it again next January and hopefully have better weather, because I know it was so cold and icky out that day that I think that kind of kept people at home. But overall, I think that everyone that attended really got a lot out of it. And then on another note, they're also potential sponsors for future events, because they're local businesses, and we got, we made a lot of contacts. We still do have the yoga with Tara, both indoors on Monday and Wednesday, and then outside at the beach at Morgan Park, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday at nine. As it's getting warm outside, the stand-up paddleboard will resume. And we have had four successful blood drives since the last time I was up here. So thank you for everybody that participates in those. As far as the park and beach accesses, we survey our thirteen parks and beach accesses at least once or twice a year. We're in the middle of one right now. Everybody will report back. There's four members on the Park and Rec Board right now, so we're hoping to get a few more. But we survey those. I know our maintenance staff takes excellent care of those, but we just kind of get like another set of eyes on them. We take some pictures, and then we have like a recap sheet that Kyle has put together to say like, this was finished, whether it be a leaky sink at Morgan Park or rust, or, you know, it could just be anything. So we just, you know, it's just four more people who are putting eyes on those and taking pictures and bringing them back to our meetings. And then, of course, we're having the beach cleanups every month. On the first Saturday, we are involved with Keep Pinellas Beautiful Now, so they provide some of our supplies, which we much appreciate, and I'd like to thank everyone that comes out for those. Last month, we had forty-six people, and this month, we had four. But I'd like to thank the diehards, because it looked like the heavens were gonna open up and rain down one on Saturday. So anyway, so we will come to one year of beach cleanups, I think, in June. So again, those are going well, and it's just a nice little hour down at nineteenth Street. So if you haven't, we invite you to join us, and it's always on the sign, so you know the date when it's coming up. And, okay, so two thousand and twenty-two, we, you guys voted on, some of you, last month, the event. It's April thirtieth from four thirty to seven thirty. It's flying me to the moon. So it's like a Frank Sinatra, Rat Pack kind of music, and we're gonna have an Italian food vendor. They're gonna sell pizza by the slice and soft drinks, and then obviously, you can bring your own, you know, picnic baskets or whatever you want to do, but it should be nice, and hopefully, we have good weather, and we have a good turnout for that. And let's see, what else? We are looking into, because we've had it suggested several times, I saw it in past Park and Rec Boards meetings, but it's been brought up about having a Beller Beach Community Foundation, so it's separate, separate from Park and Rec Board. I've been trying to set up a meeting with the person who leads it for the City of Bel Air, and we were having a hard time like touching base and getting that set up. But if anybody has any information, I know we need an attorney to go over the details of it, and then just basically, it's a non-for-profit. It'd be very similar to the, the garden club that did the benches and like some of the artwork that's out and about. It would be like that, and I know that they, to my knowledge, they're not doing that anymore. So it's been suggested that it would be nice if we could do something like that again. So if anybody would like to join in on that or has any input, if you could call me, I would appreciate that. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel? Any questions? Citizens?
You mentioned additional board members. How many are you looking for?
Well, I think there's supposed to be five and then two alternates, so.
You're, are you, are you going to need an attorney, is what you're saying? Is this project going to go forward?
We're so in the beginning stages that I just think to someone to go over the paperwork and to make sure that like, you know, it's an application that you submit to get the, the nonprofit status.
Mr. Mayor, can counsel approve them using our city attorney for that?
I don't see why not. He's gotta do something for his money.
Wait, but does it need to go to a voter?
I don't really think we have.
Just direction from counsel is fine.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that. And then on another note, I didn't mention it, we did put together a sponsorship program, like for possible vendor people to sponsor the events that we're having, and that is in your hands too. So hopefully, you guys will get to vote on that next month.
This is probably asking a lot, but what kind of revenue does two hundred items generate?
Oh, we're not generating any revenue. We weren't trying to make money off the citizens.
Okay, so my next question is, but we've got two hundred people carrying Bel Air Beach stuff around.
We do.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And, you know, I had a few bullet points on here. The sponsorships would be great, and it's always on the website that if you would like to sponsor an event, to please call me. But because there's four of us, and we can't really talk outside of the meetings because of the sunshine laws, we're not really fundraisers, like, you know, it's, we try to stay within the budget that the council approves for us. If we're gonna do something outside of that, we would sell tickets, like, and it would be worth the money that we're selling the ticket for. But for the most part, like, they're community events to get people together. It's basically two dollars and fifty cents a household per year to pay for this. I mean, it's not like we're draining the city budget, and it's, it's, you know, there are a lot of work, and we love to do them if people want them and want to attend them. And again, like, I know Kyle and I have a list of like people that we're gonna email out once the sponsorship, you approve it, that we're gonna send the sponsorship proposal to. But as far as us like knocking on doors of other cities, because we don't have a lot of businesses in Beller Beach that we can actually ask for money for, we're always going out of this area. And so, as I mentioned earlier, with the Health and Wellness Fair, I met more, I know they were all health and wellness type businesses, but, you know, they would be possibly interested, and I don't have a problem contacting people that I know, but I don't really want to just blindly knock on doors and ask people to give us money, because it's just not my jam.
Any other questions, counsel? Citizens, yes, sir. Please come to the podium, state your name, give your address.
Todd Harper, Sixteenth Street. I just have a question about the idea of the foundation, and the idea would be, as we talk about events and activities in park recreation, I would like to solicit the idea that private citizens could donate to the foundation and then use the foundation for sponsorship of city events. So the idea is that there's a, there's a, there's a sponsorship in perpetuity for the city events, but we have the ability to offer money through the foundation as a funding mechanism to pay for some of these events. And then the other aspect of the, of the foundation is the question of, do we have the ability to build a foundation bucket list of things that the citizens would like to see done that we could fund through a foundation, but not necessarily through the city budgets? So example being is maintenance of the easements and things like that. So, speak on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it?
Is that it? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Thanks.
All right, item six, now we're moving on to the city attorney report.
Mayor and counsel, two things. One, I have coordinated, and we're still in the process with city clerk picking a date for a workshop for the board for sunshine law and ethics presentation. It, it's probably gonna be about an hour and a half, with each section taking about a half hour. So we're trying to coordinate that for a workshop for counsel. That hopefully will be coming up maybe next week, we're working on it. Secondly, pursuant to counsel direction, I have talked to the city manager about drafting a addendum to his employment agreement for future needs that counsel will have during the budget process. So we have a, a simple one that we're working back and forth. Once we finalize that, we'll bring it to counsel to vote on, and that's it.
Counsel, any questions? Citizens? Back to counsel. Thank you very much, Mr. Salzman.
Can I just add, just ask one question with regards to that addendum to the contract? Is that something we can add to our workshop that have a short counsel meeting to review it? Is it that close that we could add it to the workshop date? Because.
I would say it's pretty close.
Can't wait another month.
The city manager and I talked before the meeting, and we were just discussing to make sure that the compensation for time and travel, as was discussed, would be included in there, but it, it's really, other than that, yes, we can put it on.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, item seven, city manager report. Mr. Reeves?
Mayor and counsel, in your package, you've got the current month's report. The twelfth and thirteenth bid is opening tomorrow. We did get the bid back from the boat and sea wall. It was about twenty-five thousand dollars over what we were, actually, it was more like seventy thousand over what we were expecting, but it's gonna take a budget amendment of about twenty-five thousand. Came in at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for the boat ramp or Seventh Street, the sea wall, and the sea wall at Sixteenth Street. The RFP is out for the city attorney, it's due the twelfth, as you can see. And then the code section will review that next Monday to get that moving forward. The proposed budget draft is ready to go, and we're gonna give that to the audit committee slash citizens advisory committee and our meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at five o'clock. Put at your place the financials, and for the new members, if you didn't get a copy of the budget calendar, it's there for you to peruse, and, and then we're scheduling a garage sale for May seventh. The city will go back to that, get some advertising for it, and update our signs maybe a little bit. That's all I've got.
Counsel? Anyone? Citizens? No? Back to the counsel.
Linda, we, how do we typically advertise the city's garage sale?
Usually, we put it in the Tampa Bay Times and the, well, now it's called the Largo Bel Air Bee.
Okay.
And then we'll put it on the website, people can sign up, and then we put signs at each street end that say there's a garage sale on this street.
Okay.
All right, and I'm assuming we're still going to figure out some way to keep everybody on the same side of the street?
We're gonna get new signs that say, parking this side with an arrow, and that's the side we'll put the sign on.
All right.
Having two or three signs.
Having two or three signs.
That will make many people happy in Beller Beach.
I've had a lot of calls for.
All right, anything else, counsel? Thank you, Mr. Reeves. All right, item eight, city clerk report.
Um, what I have on mine this month is just closing out the election process. All the campaign reports and, and reporting things that have to be done for that and, uh, who I have to work with to do that, and that's pretty much finished almost. All right, and then the next thing is the Muni Code supplement. They, uh, I submitted it and then they've sent the cost estimate. So, you know, once that was approved, now they'll start working on it to send me the draft. And then public records request only two at, at this time.
Impressive. Great job on the election, by the way.
Thank you so much.
Uh, counsel? Vice Mayor Gunn?
Just a, the estimate for the Muni Code, what, about how much is that?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't have the exact amount, but it was less than 2,000. I believe I can get that to you.
I, I was just, thank you.
Citizens? Oh, back to counsel? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Gentry.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, there are four items on the consent agenda. It's, uh, item nine, approval of March 7th, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Number 10 is approval of March 21st, 2022 special city council organizational meeting minutes. 11 is approval of March 24th, 2022 special city council meeting minutes. And item 12, city council acceptance of the Pinellas County 2022 multi-jurisdictional community rating system annual report for program public information, floodplain management plan, flood insurance improvement plan and flood response plan. Do I have a motion? Frank Bankard has a motion. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley, there's no discussion during the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. All right, now we're on to item 13. This is consideration of approving alternate citizens advisory committee member John J. Hayes as a regular committee member. The reason why we're doing this is to fill the vacancy of former, uh, committee member Jody Shirley. Apparently she quit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn, do I have a second?
Second.
Leslie Notaro? All right. The discussion starts with Glenn Gunn.
This is an important committee and, uh, John Hayes has been a positive influence and attended all the regular meetings to the best of his abilities and has always provided a, a great influence. So I heartily recommend approving him as a regular committee member and then backfill the alternate.
And I believe, uh, John Hayes is here tonight. Uh, if you'd like to address the council, please feel free to do so.
John Hayes, 3210 Gulf Boulevard, Beller Beach. Uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel, thank you. I served, uh, a little over a year ago and now on a financial review committee and moving to the citizens advisory committee. I thought I was going to be a full member to begin with, but Ms. Shirley, uh, usurped me and it's good that she bailed out to become a council member because I'm happy to be a full member now. So thank you, councilperson Shirley, for doing that. I do like to serve and I'm very delighted. I think you have an excellent committee, exclusive of me even, but I think they do very good work to help the council and the mayor in making decisions or recommendations for you to consider. So thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we have any, uh, comments from the council? No more. Uh, how about the citizens? Nope. Back to the council one more time? Oh, all right, let's, uh, vote by row, roll call.
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
Yes.
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Yes.
Mayor Gavis?
Yes. Seven to nothing. Wow, that's amazing. Congratulations, Mr. Hayes. Thank you for volunteering. All right, now we're, uh, on to item number 14. Uh, that's to review and approve advertisement for the city manager position. Originally several revised versions were suggested, so I asked Lynn and Patty to select their top two recommendations. I see that, um, uh, Vice Mayor Gunn added a third one that I may not have been in the running at the time. Uh, so, uh, has anyone had time to look it over?
Yes.
So what we'll do is we will move, uh, Vice Mayor Guns into position number three. Uh, currently there's, uh, the first two, and then there's a third one which, uh, was, was on the desk whenever we arrived. Okay, so, uh, yeah. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley and Lloyd Roberts? All right, Jody, uh, go ahead and start.
Yeah, so I reviewed all three, um, and looking at them on the surface, I think that the draft, uh, Glenn Gunn, uh, presented is a more thorough approach to an ad and gives a clear understanding of what we're looking for.
Other council members?
When I'm looking at Glenn's and I just had a few minutes, uh, ago to take a look at that, but I think it's very important that we do add where he said a city council manager form of governance, because that could be important to anybody that may be applying, and I don't think that's in the other two.
Let's see here. Says the city manager is appointed by and reports to a seven-member city council.
Okay.
And that's, that's in option one, and I believe in option two, it says kind of the same thing. I, I think that, that all of them will serve the purpose, but, um, I, I agree with councilmember Shirley that Glenn Guns is, uh, far more detailed. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, um, one thing I'd say, at least the only update to Glenn's is, uh, he said send resume with salary history by 3:00 PM. Uh, that's really not good. You need to have received them by 3:00 PM. Otherwise, people will be on the hook saying, hey, I sent it. You know, what, what's, what's up with my, uh, submission? So you need to say must be received in-house by a certain time.
Any other comments?
I'll, I'll just address why I, I made some of those changes. Uh, Lynn and I have sat down and you'll see kind of like a flow chart in there too, and just tried to hit the major tasks we need to think about when we go through this, uh, city manager hiring process. And, and Lynn and I kind of reviewed a little bit. He's seen some inconsistencies and some of the blocks will be moved around and changed, but, uh, what I saw, when I initially went through this thing was that if you look at the, the third block in the planning phase, which is review and diva, define the job description, and then you look at the application phase, which is the top of the second column, and that's where you post the, the job description. I didn't know which was a chicken and the egg, you know? My thinking is, I, my expectation was that as a collective body, we would sit down and, and kind of think about what we're looking for in the city manager. If you, if you look at the, uh, first and second drafts, they were the result of the last hiring process, which was 2017, 2018. And then we had a consultant kind of change the job descriptions in 2019. Well, it's 2022. A lot of things have gone on since then. Pandemics, we're in double-digit inflation, and we've got a lot of, uh, new brain trust on the council here who have, they're bringing some interest, personal gender things for their constituents. And I think as a body, I think we need to sit down and think about what are the new threats and spend more time looking forward rather than over our shoulder when it comes to the job description. I, I think some things are changing and I think it's incumbent upon us to, to take a good look at that. Now, that can be mitigated by building this criteria for how we want to go through the packages and select them. But that has to be done before we open any packages in all fairness. And my concern is if we haven't thought of some things or we started looking through packages and saying, man, I wish we had have thought of that, or that's a good thing. I, I, I think that's where I see the value in going through this process a little early. And because the process wasn't there, I at least tried to touch on some of those things to give also any applicant an idea of what we consider valuable and, and some of the new things that we're looking for in city managers, uh, because of the times are changing and, and that sort of thing. I, uh, that, that was my goal, and I just wanted to hit on some of those new things. Thanks.
Anyone else on council?
A question, um, in this draft by Glenn Gunn. Are you, would you put all these things in here in caps as they are in your?
Oh, no, no, no. Those are the, those were emphasizing the areas where they were inserted into the original draft that I looked.
Okay, it wouldn't go out like with all these caps, okay?
It's just a draft.
Just curious.
That was just so that you, you could read it and just glue very quickly what, what some of the inputs were.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, um, uh, I like what you've done. I'm wondering if it's possible that we're disqualifying any possibility of, or you see what I'm saying? We're, we're making it so difficult that they may turn away and say, I, I don't qualify for this and we have no applicants. Is that possible?
Perhaps, but what I'm thinking is I'm, I'm hopefully opening it up to people who might say, hey, you know, this is just a, the ordinary run-of-the-mill city manager job application. And instead try to say, hey, you know, we need a guy with good communication skills because there are cruise ships with more people on it than we have residents in Bel Air Beach. And he's a hands-on person because he's only got five staff. So he's got to be willing to, you know, roll up his sleeves and do some work and take an interest in the community and, uh, kind of supplement his staff. So I'm, I'm just trying to hit on some of the things to open it up for people to look at this thing and say, oh, this sounds like a different place.
Or, or, or she.
Or what?
Or she.
Excuse me.
Well, and, and the other thought process is maybe we don't want 150 applications that are not qualified. You know, maybe we want to keep it narrow so that we get a good pool of qualified people. And then they, and then just a question with regards to the, uh, job description. I know I asked for that because I was going, I don't know how you write an ad without a job description, right? And I, and I know we don't have, what is the plan? I guess this is more towards Lynn. What is the plan to get a new job description? Are you working with someone? Are you doing that yourself? What's happening?
Well, we, we have the job description that was updated in 2019, and I've made some edits to it. You know, I can send that out to you.
Okay, yeah, because I, I'd asked for that a couple of times because it's hard to kind of say, yeah, this ad hits, hits the spot when we don't know what the script, job description says that we're expecting some.
It pretty much, uh, mirrors what the job description says as far as, you know, site plan stuff, floodplain, CRS, things of that nature.
I, I, I'd like to just address that one question about the, the fear of keeping people away because it seems to be too much. My fear is actually the opposite. I'm afraid that people will submit applications and they won't emphasize a particular skill that we may decide we're, we're really looking for later on. You know, that, that thing where we open up an application saying, gee, I wish we had elicited that as a, as a requirement. So a person submits an application knowing, or he doesn't think it's important, somebody else emphasizes it. Well, we, we, we gravitate toward the person who did emphasize it, whereas the other person might have had some great experience in, in that, that realm. So I, I guess I'd rather open it up than ask for a rock and get a rock back, so.
Mr. Bankard?
Mr. City Manager, you've seen all three proposals. Which one do you feel is best? Since you've been doing the job for a number of years, I don't want to try to reinvent the wheel here.
Well, I, they all have their good and bad things. I, I think, uh.
Which has more good?
Well. You're putting me on the spot. No, uh, I kind of felt like one or two was really, one of those was more directed. But there were some things in, uh, Vice Mayor Guns that I thought maybe needed to be added to one or two. I think you do, you, right now, you just got to have a basic ad, try to get applicants, you know? You know, that's what you want. Uh, we'll update the job description and I'll send that out to you. Uh, but it's only a couple of things that need to be changed on it since things have changed since it was done in 2019. But for the most part, the 2019 job description is, is pretty good.
So that would be no.
Consultant do that.
That would be number one? Pardon? That would be number one in our agenda?
No, no, no. The, the, one and two in mine and Patty's eyes were identical. It was just, the words were moved around. That's, that's how I felt. In Glenn's, all this, uh, I thought, you know, something, you know, at the bottom of his, pretty much he's saying the same thing also.
That was just a cut and paste from one and two, actually.
Right. Uh, but I think, you know, the, the comment about due to the small size of the staff, close interaction with the residents, that might be something you want to add to one or two. But the rest of his, for the most part, is the same as one and two. So, you know, I think it's kind of a trifecta of three and you cut and paste and make one.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. Uh, let's take it to the citizens right quick. Any comments? Okay, back to the council. Um, if we have no other comments, let's, uh, let's do a vote by roll call.
For?
Uh, one, two, or three?
Okay.
Can I ask a question before we go? The, something I did notice between one and two, I guess, was, uh, there were differences in a must-have demonstrated experience in certain things or the other one said something are just, are beneficial. Must have a four-year degree or, you know, something along the lines of requires a bachelor's degree. There were some subtle differences there, and, uh, again, one was nailing down certain requirements and one, one, one of the others were just saying beneficial. So there are some subtle differences there that you really need to kind of look through rather than just say, well, they kind of look the same.
If I may, Vice Mayor, uh, well, since there really is no such thing as a four-year degree, you either have a bachelor's or you don't. Uh, most people are going through five, six, so take the four-year out.
And I guess that's why I put in there, or some equivalent, demonstrated experience in certain areas. Do you really need to nail that down? I mean, there are, there are people, there are a lot of smart people walking around and Mark Twain said it best, don't let schooling get in the, in the way of your learning, you know, so. We've seen it before. A wall full of degrees and stuff doesn't necessarily mean.
Lloyd, uh, Mr. Reeves, did you say earlier though, you were going to take the opportunity to go ahead and, and kind of rewrite this thing before we vote on it tonight?
Well, I was trying to get some feedback from the council because we really need to put an advertisement out.
The plan was to put something together to have something to vote on tonight, and that's why you have the three options, because, uh, we are running out of time on this.
I agree.
That's why we were all supposed to respond to Lynn's email. Did you get response from everyone?
Yes, we got something.
So then, let's vote.
I, I think we all. I I think we are in a the perfect storm. I use that phrase thing, but I don't think it's uh we're in the crisis mode. I think we've got a lot of backup and I, again, I think we we really need to the term I that comes to mind is make haste slowly. I mean, do it, do it one time, do it right without having to back up and think about this thing. So I don't think we're at the crisis mode and we wasted a week in between. We could have had some discussion on this stuff last week and we didn't. So the question is, is, I mean, maybe massage it, put together something and uh have a special meeting next week once everybody gets a chop on it.
Okay, we had um, we've 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 called this up for a vote and it's unfortunately, we have to vote on it. Everyone's given us the opportunity to speak and we have our options between one, two, and three. My advice is if we don't like the ad, once it's uh published, then we just revise it later. Thoughts?
Agree.
Let's move forward. Patty, would you please uh call roll? It's it you just, everyone's going to pick one, two, or three, and we'll go from there.
Councilmember Zabel.
Two.
Councilmember Shirley.
Three.
Councilmember Roberts.
Two.
Councilmember Notaro.
One.
Councilmember Banker.
Two.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Three.
Mayor Gaddis.
Three. I'm sorry, I was so engrossed in this vote. Can you give me the count, please?
Okay, we had three for number three. Three. One, two, three for number two and one for number one.
Okay, it sounds like we need to have a recount, uh, and it looks like it's between two and three. Let's do another vote.
You're eliminating one.
One is out.
Councilmember Zabel.
Two.
Councilmember Shirley, three. Councilmember Roberts.
Two.
Councilmember Notaro, three. Councilmember Banker.
Two.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Three.
Mayor Gaddis.
Three. All right, it's four to three. Uh, number three wins. And move forward with the advertising, please. Okay, up next, we have consideration of resolution twenty twenty-two dash O two. Uh, will the city attorney please read the resolution?
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash O two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, providing for council to respond to comments by citizens of Bel Air Beach on non-agenda items. That's resolution twenty twenty-two dash O two, read by title only.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Frank Banker, do I have a second? Motion dies. Right. All right, we're on to item number sixteen. Uh, this is consideration of selecting uh council members as voting delegates. Uh, well, the main voting delegate and then we're we'll have alternate voting delegate one and alternate voting delegate number two for the Barrier Islands Government Council, affectionately known as the Big C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jody Shirley? Do I have a second?
Second.
Glenn Gunn? Jody, you have the floor?
I would like to nominate Dave Gaddis to be um voting delegate one. But the voting delegate and then you need two alternates. Uh, Glenn and Leslie.
In that order?
Sure. They may not want to be, but. Okay.
Sir, I I respectfully withdraw as an alternate. We need one more alternate.
We still need an alternate. Any nominations?
Am I still on the alternate list?
You are on the alternate list.
Okay.
I would nominate Lloyd Roberts.
Think he's trying to decide whether he really wants that job or not.
Well, I had another one there I had my eye on, but. He can do more than one.
Would you prefer to be the second alternate?
That would be wonderful.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, uh, discussions beyond that. Uh, any comments from the citizens? Nope, back to the council. All right, so uh it looks like uh Dave Gaddis for primary and Leslie Notaro for first alternate and then Lloyd Roberts for second alternate. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. You all know what we're doing there. Let's move on to item number seventeen. Consideration uh selecting council uh selecting a council member as voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Glenn Gunn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike Zabel? Discussion starting with Vice Mayor Gunn.
And once again, I'll nominate the mayor, Dave Gaddis. I think that's an important role for the city and he served us well on the Big C. I think he's done a great job there and uh I don't know how he keeps up with the schedule that he does, but he does it admirably. So uh he certainly has my uh my support for uh the voting member for the Florida League of Cities delegation.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My second is a nomination. Uh, you make a outstanding member of that league.
Thank you. We have any comments from the citizens? Nope, back to the council. Okay, um, Dave Gaddis up for Florida League of Cities. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Right. Now we are up to item number eighteen. Uh, this is consideration uh of selecting a council member as voting delegate for the Sun Coast League of Cities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Leslie Notaro? Do I have a second?
Second.
Glenn Gunn? Leslie, you have the floor?
A volunteer. I've done the um Sun Coast League before. Know a lot of the people on there.
All right. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a non uh nomination? Okay, uh, that being said, I would like to nominate Lloyd Roberts. Uh, I think that Lloyd has already been to one of their gatherings. Is that correct?
I have, yeah.
All right. Any other nominations? Citizens? Okay, back to the council. All right, so we're going to have to take a roll call vote. Patty?
Councilmember Banker.
Notaro. Leslie.
Councilmember Notaro.
Me.
Councilmember Roberts.
Me as well.
Councilmember Shirley.
Uh, Notaro.
Councilmember Zabel.
Councilmember Lloyd. Roberts.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gunn.
Notaro.
Mayor Gaddis.
Roberts. That's four to three. Leslie Notaro wins. Congratulations. Okay, we're up to item nineteen, which is unfinished business. Council? City manager? Back to council. Citizens? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium, give us your name and your address.
John Hanzick, Twenty Second Street. Mr. Mayor, counsel, it's a matter of point of information. I've been sitting here tonight again observing how people are speaking with this new equipment. And I'm having difficulty and I don't know about anybody else hearing because some people aren't speaking into the microphones. Some of the microphones are anywhere from sixteen to eighteen inches away from the speaker. It's not just y'all that you're speaking to. You're speaking to us, the citizens. I would again ask when you are speaking, speak into the microphone. I know we have a tendency to look at the person we're addressing. If you need to do that, move the microphone so that we, the people, can hear you. You represent us, but would like to be able to know what you're discussing in here clearly. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanzick, and I'm going to go ahead and address that now. Uh, this is not a back and forth. I'm just responding to uh the city manager. The very first night we had this, this system was cranking. I could hear myself. I don't hear myself. These these microphones are turned way down compared to what they were on the maiden voyage of our new sound system. And uh I I'm requesting that we turn the gain up next next meeting, okay? Yes.
Can we just take an informal poll? People in the background, who else is having difficulty?
Thank you very much. Any other unfinished business? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, now we are up to council comments. Uh, this month, we are starting with council member Banker.
Thank you. Uh, just one comment and I maybe know the answer, but maybe I my our city manager can help me. What's the rules or regulation of electric bikes on the sidewalks? Because I had one resident complain that they almost got hit. The bike was coming against traffic on the sidewalk and they were walking their dog and
to my knowledge, there's no regulation.
No regu.
No, the the only regulation and we took care of that with our ordinance a few months ago is on the beach.
I I understand that, but I'm I'm talking about on the walking pavement.
No.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, Leslie Notaro.
No comments.
Lloyd Roberts. No comments.
Jody Shirley?
I just one thing is I want to say thank you for bringing that to our attention on the microphones because I'm looking at some of them are pointed towards us, some of them are pointed away like this. I don't know what we're doing because these are new to many of us. So thanks for letting us know and, you know, certainly we need to probably do some testing and see where we're at with that. So thank you. And uh just thank everyone for participating. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Mike Zabel.
No comments.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
The microphones are an improvement. We're moving in the right direction. So thanks for the input and we'll continue to make those quality adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. I have one item for you, which is the uh the southbound traffic light. Pull this thing a little closer here. Uh, the southbound traffic light, it's causing some confusion. And there are two straight green lights and two left turn arrows as you're headed southbound. Everyone is confused. They don't know what to do. Is it two arrows in the left lane? Is it it it? I think what needs to happen is one of those lights needs to be pulled and centered on that one lane that's supposed to take you southbound. Uh, I'm seeing more and more people getting confused about it, especially if they don't live here. If they live here, they've they've already adjusted, but uh um if you could, would you please reach out to the county and see if there's anything that can be done? Yeah, I've talked to them about that already and the configuration is they're saying is that's the requirement. I have asked them to put uh a sign on the the station up there to kind of direct the turn, you know, signage as opposed, but I will ask them again. On my way to work, I think, if not on my way to work, there's there's an intersection that I I pass through often. And if that's the requirement, then that particular intersection is not uh up to spec. Yeah, I asked the county that when it first got put up there because I thought, why you got two lights in that, two green lights? Either put them together close or get rid of one. And when I asked that question, they told me that's the traffic transportation requirement, but I'll go back to them again. Got you. Okay, all right. Um, I'd like to thank all who attended tonight. It's important to know what's going on in your city and it's also important that you be heard. By the way, can you hear me now? Please keep coming back and please feel free to contact any one of us if you have any questions or concerns. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley, all in favor?
Hi.
Have a good night, everyone.